All right, thank you ma'am. All right. All right, so it is six oh five, six oh seven, and I would like to call the committee of the whole meeting on November eighth, twenty twenty one, to order the first order of business is the approval of the committee of the whole minute. Have a motion for accepting of that. I've got.
I have a second, please.
Second.
I got, okay, Rosemary. A discussion?
Yes, I do. Under Roman numeral four, it says discussion regarding alliance district funding. Can you hear me? Guys?
Yes, yes, we can hear you.
Um, it's very unclear here. I'm not sure what is being. Here it says Mr. Knight stated that he and this Austin met with the state and it was determined that Groton would be getting two hundred thousand dollars for physically year twenty-two and fiscal year twenty-three in alliance funds. Now, is that per year or is that each year? That was one question. And I know that we've got.
Per year and each year.
All right.
We should say it one way or the other, though. I thought we did review that.
I thought we did, but then the next thing was, is this is very unclear. I don't know Rita, what you meant? And what you meant, what did you mean by noted that there should be a line item for student who need help from a teacher? I don't understand that, and I need clarification on that. And I suggest for the future topic for discussion is what can do for these students? So I just was, I don't understand those. I would like a little clarification and maybe clean it up a little bit. You know, because it becomes a little, you know, they go out to the public and everything, and I've been asked about that as well.
I think you were talking Rita about tutoring underneath the alliance district. So I think I was referring to a line item regarding tutoring for students.
For students.
Students.
For.
And then you suggested a future topic for discussion.
Like, what are we doing for these students that have, you know, that have fallen behind?
Yeah.
A future topic for discussion is what we can do? We as the board or we as the district?
Well, I would say the district. What is the district doing for students who?
For the board.
For the budgets.
Right, okay, well, I just, you know, it's unclear, and when I was asked on it, I had no answer. So I wanted to make sure that I I asked for clarification tonight.
I wanted part of that money, that two hundred thousand dollars, to be actually a real line item for how we are helping students who really need the help, who have fallen behind. So I wanted it clear, how much money is going to those, you know, those students?
Well, and we have, I think I had mentioned that we have the ESER and the art ESER one, two, and three, and then the art ESER. So that we do have funding in tutoring and multiple federal funds. So that's something we can certainly bring up, bring to the board.
I just wanted to, you know, clarify, like actually see a line item and how much of the money is actually going to these students?
Thank you, Rita. John, I'm going to change it to Mr. Goldman suggested a future topic for discussion as to what the district can do for these students. I want to make sure everybody's comfortable with that.
Or what we are already doing for the students who've fallen behind.
And what we could do in the future.
Right. I think she's talking about the future.
I am.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I hate, I've hung out with you for ten years. I started to understand how you think. All right, any, any other questions about the minutes?
So just, I'm sorry, the first statement from Rita, are we adding the word tutoring? There should be a line item for student tutoring or student or what?
It's just for students who need help.
Can we make that plural for students?
So we're not adding the term tutoring. We're just saying there should be a line item for students who need help from a teacher. I find that so nebulous, so unclear. And Oh, I know.
Put your volume all the way down, okay?
Yeah, I think that should be worded differently.
I don't know. This Volker noted that there should be a line item for students.
Who are receiving tutoring or teacher, from teachers.
Right, the term word, so.
Tutoring is the natural go-to when you think, how do you bring kids up to speed? You think tutoring.
Yeah.
But stepping, stepping back from that, I have to ask the very neutral question. Is there anything else other than tutoring as we know it? Or is tutoring just a single most logical word you could use in there for bringing the kids up to speed? I don't want to foreclose other methods.
Right, so I would see that tutoring, and I'm going to defer to you, but the tutoring is kind of like the umbrella, and that things are underneath it are for around the tutoring. That would be my guess of it. I also don't want to spend all of our time sort of wordsmithing this. As long as we know what was meant by it. I think grammatically, I think we're just trying to get it in more in sync so it makes sense.
Okay, I just, like I said, I get asked. I want to be able to.
You want to make sure that it's not confused with special ed.
That's right.
That's why I think tutoring is, is the appropriate word, because that's how you expend the money.
Okay. You could use the word intervention, but some people might not understand because we have the tiered intervention during the school day. We have the after-school, before-school. It could be, you know, in the way of tutoring, certainly.
It could be in social work.
It could be social work. It could be, yeah.
We don't even know what.
So can we go for tutoring? Make it plural students?
Students, yes.
Well, ultimately, the question is, we're going with the minutes. I'm not actually into the discussion itself, so the question should be, what was meant at the time?
That's right.
Minutes will take it.
That's right.
Tutoring.
Okay. Thank you.
I remember. All right, all those, so with those.
With corrections.
With corrections. So all those in favor of approving the committee of the whole minutes of October eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, with the corrections, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, this motion has carried. We're moving on to agenda item number three, which is proposal for the culinary room at Fitch High School attachment. To see my good friend, Mr. Sam Kilpatrick is here. Are you going to be talking to us about this?
Yes, do you want to introduce it or?
Well, I've actually done several walkthroughs in the vintage part of Fitch, and specifically in the culinary space. And it was really set up more for a home ec space, and now as we're unfolding more of these careers program and know how interested kids are in foods and culinary arts, and even as a career choice in the future, that we really want to have a facility that's equipped to have the professional kinds of equipment that they would need or they would see when they go into a business, instead of just a home setting or home ec. So I think that's part of the shift in kind of college and career readiness, workforce readiness. And so in looking at that, Congressman Porty has provided us with a career kind of counselor in a grant that he's done. In the STEM Careers Grant, we're also looking at being able to support these careers program, and then in the Perkins Grant, they actually have put in to put some equipment into the Perkins Grant. So this would be then looking at the facility and the major equipment, like the stoves, the refrigeration, that kind of thing. So Sam had prepared something for us back when Dr. G was here. Well, actually, this is when I was here, twenty twenty-one, March, so. I would think it was him, but he probably had the idea.
And so the paper that you have in front of you that was included as an attempt attachment is for a proposal for architectural fees for designing the space to bring it up to a more commercial-grade space.
Did this go through the finance?
Yeah.
Yes, this will also be, this is one of the items that we'll be asking for in the CIP.
And this is the, the actual planning of this project is the seventy-five thousand. Sorry.
A question about this.
Rita? Wait up, one second. I just recognized Lee, and so then I'll recognize you afterward.
Are we adding more room?
No, we're reconfiguring the space that's already there.
But we're not getting any more.
We're not taking square footage to the building. Not at this time, no.
But we actually need sixty thousand dollars worth of design.
Yes, by the time you get done with plumbing, electrical, all those consultants each back in the architectural design itself, yes, it's totally reconfiguring the entire space.
So things will not look, no, but it doesn't include appliances or anything like that.
This is just the proposal for the design.
This is just the design.
This is not for the, thank you, the construction or reconstruction. This is just. That's why we have multiple grants on this project. So we have Congressman Courtney having a careers counselor who can help kids get into the right career workforce. And then we also have the Perkins Grant, which is looking at some of the different big pieces of equipment, and then this grant, which is looking at the facility itself.
And then in addition to that, what they are estimating is six hundred thousand dollars in construction costs. The design that happened this coming year with the construction happening the year after, and that estimate was for six hundred thousand, I believe, yes.
Rita?
That would include equipment, too.
Right, that's in, that's what you had sent us. My question is, Sam, right now there are four kitchens in there, so we're only allowed sixteen students. Four to a kitchen. How does this alter that so more students will be able to be in this room? How many more students? I can't find on here. How many students then would be allowed to be in this room?
That would be one of the things that we'd be asking the architects to make sure that we design it so that we can get more students involved in the program.
When I walk through with the principal and the culinary arts teachers, their idea is to have more of an island so that you can get more kids around instead of the four corners of the room, which prevents it from getting up to twenty to twenty-four. So their idea, and then to use the middle space, which has been storage also, as another space for kids to work. So they're really looking to, you know, almost double the size of number of students that can take these courses. So not even at one time, but they're looking to really increase.
But we have such a fabulous kitchen area where our food service staff prepare our lunches. Is there any way that that could also be utilized for students, you know, for prep work to, you know, rather than in addition to this, utilize our present kitchens that we have?
Something that when we think about workforce ready as kind of an internship to have them learn in that kind of setting, that that's actually a very good idea, Rita. But I don't think the number of classes that we have, they go full throttle. You know, they're using that space twenty-four, seven, and it's still not enough space for the number of students who would like to participate. So I think the restructuring of this, having someone who really knows design to take a look at that is really the important first step.
And there is no other space that could be attached to this for even more students?
Well, that, like I said, there's some wasted space in there. As I walked through, I saw like storage space, and they're really, their idea is to really start fresh with all of that space so that we can do as much as we can do and have as many kids participate as possible.
Would we still have those kitchens? I mean, they were very expensive.
They really are old and antiquated. You wouldn't want it in your home, and never mind in a.
Okay, well, one I remember we bought new when, when Fitch was.
You probably did. You probably did, but it's not new anymore. That was a couple of years ago there, Rita. I'm, I'm. I'm going to ask Liz.
Liz, I just wanted to address the suggestion about having the kids, and Rita, it's a good suggestion about the kids being in the, the formal kitchen area, but they start preparing breakfast at, at like seven, before seven o'clock in the morning, and then they're starting, they go right into preparation for lunch. There's not that much time to even have a class in those kitchens. So the only thing I can think of that would work would be having internship. But to me, that's not a, as I think about, that's just not viable to have kids in our formal kitchen where we are preparing for the, for the student body.
So I want us to stick to the design proposal because that's what's on our agenda.
Thank you.
So do you have a?
I agree with you, but they can't, these are kids who, they can't use industrial stuff. That's not, they're not allowed to.
All right, thank you. So you have a question on the proposal?
Yes, because we're going on the presumption that we're, if we say yes, then everyone votes on this yes, that we're going forward with the design. And then if we like the design, we'll go forward with the, with the actual build-out.
I think, I think we're looking to bring this to CIP, so really to have the board support and bring it to a CIP.
Right, right. So the question is going to come up, the question is going to come up is does Grasso have, it's not the first time I've mentioned this either, but does Grasso have a program like this? And while it's nice to think of Fitch as the center of the universe, anything you need is available at Fitch. Is there an ongoing program? Are there kitchens like the ones we would like at Grasso, so that whatever the interest is could Grasso satisfy? Because they do that in other areas as well.
So. I got you.
Yes, I just don't want the perception that we're building basically parallel facilities for the same purpose. Grasso is having, introducing people with the, you know, this is how you put things together food-wise, and we're doing the same thing.
My guess is that there's probably a scale difference between what Grasso tech, because that is more, that is a culinary program that, that a, you know, would be involved with for three years versus sort of what we would be offering here, but I don't have the answer to that.
Yeah, and if this was a space that was not equipment, equipment-heavy and, and, you know, requiring electrical plumbing work and all that jazz and HVAC work, that would be different. Provide square footage for, I'm going to just throw it out there, arts and crafts or something like that, or mathematics instruction. This is an equipment-intensive area. And so that, I think that's a natural question that someone's going to raise, which is, is Grasso right down the hill doing the same thing? And you said it's a question of scale, that you're leaving something, you're leaving something on a far greater scale. That's not a total answer, because again, the question is, if you have sixteen kids or twenty kids or thirty-two kids or whatever, interested, could Grasso accommodate that? Is there any practical way to do that?
Not during the day.
No.
Seven thousand dollars on that.
Yeah, I don't know if, how would Grasso be able to accommodate our Fitch kids kind of coming in and out of a culinary program?
We did that in other areas. Kids are interested in something Grasso's got that we don't.
Only, there's going to be an after-school project that they can receive credit, but that's more in the robotics or the manufacturing end.
Okay.
They, you know, and it's going to start slow and grow, but that's only to receive additional credit after school. But we've tried to do things during the school day, and it really has not worked out because our schedules are so different. The way they operate versus the way we operate is just very different. Liz?
I just also wanted to say that this upgrade will support the careers-related program by the International Baccalaureate. And it's one of our new, you know, the career-related program is what we're really focusing on. And if that's what we're going, this, this is a necessity. And also those, I've been in those kitchens. What did you go get them?
But this is what I kept calling the third pathway. It's, it's kids that are looking for jobs, but they're probably not going to college. They may work in the culinary, but they're not going to become chefs in the kitchen necessarily.
Or they could be. They could be. So I'm, I'm going to bring us back to the proposal. Is there any further questions about the proposal? And what I hear from Sam is that the proposal, this proposal has kind of gone through the pathway that the Board of Ed uses, which is has done, it went through the financing facilities. I'm doing it this way, and that it's come to the committee of the whole to make sure that the rest of the board is aware of this, and that we are going to vote on this at the end of the month. You have to tap the board, yes. It's going to come, it's going to go to the end. The end of the, oh my goodness, it is going to go to our business meeting at the end of the month as a vote. That is what I meant to say, and I'm sorry that it got done. Any other questions about the proposal? If not, we're going to move on to the next agenda item. Thank you. All right, so the next is with a referral question, which was a stopping review at the Mystic River Magnet and the Thames River Magnet, and its attachment. See, is what is on, and I see we have Steve Willer. Are you here because you just have missed us, or are you here for this part of the question? He's here because he knows the dynamics and the real effort that's been going into opening these two very big schools.
Sorry, we are having technical difficulties on, on this end. Superintendent's Austin's phone is either talking to her or ringing. But she's not hearing voices because we're all hearing it. Just in case you guys were concerned.
So as you remember, that the capacity for these two schools could be as big as six hundred, and we're almost there. We're kind of in the mid-five hundreds. These schools also house our preschool, pre-K, TK, so our primary programs, and with the look that we could go with a universal pre-K someday, we just have to be aware of that. And so they're the only two buildings that house from pre-K all the way to grade five. They are also the only two buildings that house both our ABA program for our autistic students and also our academy program for behavioral and emotional support. So I have to say that they probably have the most stress and the most number of students than anyone. They're four-tier schools where most of our schools, the schools that they came from were two or three-tiered schools, and the schools that we have are really mostly three-tier. However, the other two magnets, CK and NEA, have three or four tiers at the K and one. But these are the only two buildings that are full throttle, four-tier schools. We had, when we first, the reason that Ken put together this chart was originally, to take you back a couple of years, when we were looking for efficiencies by closing three schools and opening the two. We felt like administratively, we could reduce. We felt secretarial, we could reduce. We thought through teacher unified arts, we could reduce. And we did say, take some reductions, but then we had to add back. So secretarily, those two buildings having one secretary each was not, was impossible at the start of the year. And we really were holding on. We had community coordinators coming in overtime. You know, it was just impossible, just even managing busing and bus communications, never mind all the other things that secretaries have to do. We also had a split of a assistant principal who was focusing on special education. Now, all those preschools, pre-Ks and ABAs and academies, along with all the rest of special education, have to be serviced, have PPTs. That person could not even handle all the PPTs, never mind other things that would be needed to be handled. So we found the stress right away was really pretty insurmountable. Our classroom teachers, if you take a look at the chart FY twenty-one, and then the budget currently of FY twenty-two, you can see that Thames River Magnet currently has four total administrators with the one principal, and then the one and a half assistant, and then the one and a half secretary. You see Mystic River two has the principal, the one and a half assistant principal, and the one and a half secretary for a total of eight compared to last year with the three, a total of nine. So we really have one FTE there that we had reduced, but really are feeling the need that you could really have two assistant principals for each of those big schools to service special education and all the other things that are happening. One of the things I've heard Steve say, and then he can certainly come up and speak for himself, but we look at our principals as instructional leaders. They need to be in classrooms. They need to be evaluating teachers along with the assistant principal. But you're talking about many more FTEs in evaluating than what was happening at S.B. Butler or Claude Chester or even Mary Morrison. So the fact to even just evaluate, never mind, Steve is used to, and so is Jamie, walking through those classrooms all day long. And, you know, that can't happen when you're opening a new building. You are now the, you know, you're handling all of the punch list and the things that need to get done for the building. And so I've heard their cry loud and clear, and I just wanted to bring it to your attention and see what we could do here to help support them.
Susan, before you move on to teaching, I have a comment, but whenever you get, before you finish administration.
That's really what I wanted to say administratively. You know, communication is so key. So communicating with parents, you've seen the communication come through with buses. It's so important. You saw a pre-K student. It was really important that the secretary was on the phone with this parent while they were trying to locate the child, and the child was there on the bus. But it really, that person, that secretary who has the, the phone to, with the parent, has to stay calm, cool, and collected, and you need someone who can do that. So, or an assistant principal or a principal. So it's really busy trying to get five hundred and fifty kids on a bus at the end of a day and get them home safely and, and get them in safely. Safety is kind of a key component to all of this. So I just feel that, you know, while we knew they were going to be large schools, we didn't live it. So we went from these much smaller neighborhood schools to this much larger. And, you know, they, they are wonderful schools, and they are beautiful schools, and we just really want to do our very best supporting our students and their families in these schools. Rita, your question?
Yeah, I have a couple. I mean, when you think that our middle school, which has like nine hundred plus, and our high school, which is about a thousand, have one principal and three assistant principals. That's four. And these schools have populations of close to six hundred, and they're having, you're, you're proposing them to have two and a half, I believe. Is that what I see?
Yep.
Two and a half.
Right.
At a school. So you could see that, how the strain, and then you have Konaski and some of the other schools that have a population of a little over three hundred that have two. And so, you know, there, there isn't, there isn't equity in our schools in terms of administration. And I know there are differences, but it's, it's something to consider, you know. For, I, I totally understand how difficult it would be at Thames River and Mystic River not having the enough principals and assistant principals being staffed at that school. So I'm all for this and maybe rearranging some of our other schools, because again, it's an additional cost and figuring out how do we make equity with all our schools.
So Rita, you might remember, and I think the board was so supportive of this, but when we had our, both our middle school and our high school hovering around a thousand students, it came up that it was really necessary to have coordination six through twelve. So we added, you know, a teacher administrator in three of the core areas, humanities, ELA, and STEM, and also in special ed to help support with the many, you know, PPTs. So in addition to the four in each of those schools administration, we had four others that helped support it, and now a new athletic director, who's an additional admin to help support athletics for both schools, six through twelve.
So then you're making a case then for one last vice principal at the middle school and the high school.
Not necessarily.
That's really what we should be considering and staffing up our elementary schools.
It's taking all those people, Rita, and especially.
Might be taking all those people, but if you're, if you're thinking of equity for our schools, it's the elementary that should, we should be staffing up. and maybe thinking about reducing a little bit in our, I mean, in my opinion, in our middle school and high school. To have three, we never had three vice principals except when we had the person was head of guidance. You know, it was different. We had then we went down to two and then back up to three and now we have all this additional staff for evaluation and a full-time athletic director. It's sort of over the top.
I would say that evaluation in the past eight years has, led by the state, has been, you know, a real significant process that is, you know, that has been developed by our own teaching and learning collaboratives. And it's a very fair process and it's for all teachers and it really requires our administrators to be in classrooms.
Right, but what I'm saying is that it's not fair to our elementary staff who have to do all that plus.
So I'm gonna recommend that when we start going through our budget time period and we get to the salary portion, the administration, that we actually have, we actually have people prepared to kind of talk to us about what would it look like if we scaled back? What would it look like if we added? So that when we're thinking about what we can, what we can afford or not afford, it's in context of us going through a budget. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's kind of why I prepared, why I had Ken prepare this chart. So you could reflect back on what was, you know, what we thought we could do. And if you look at each category, whether it's administration, we saved an FTE, whether it was the teaching staffing, we saved over seven, five, six, seven, over one FTE. And then with the custodians, there was another FTE saving. So there was some savings to that or cost avoidance. But we're finding out that avoiding the cost has not worked.
Well, yeah.
You know, because we, even though we closed three schools and we opened two, we still have as many kids or more now in those buildings. And they're gonna just grow because if we have a universal pre-K or all these submarines coming in, it's just gonna get bigger, not smaller. So I just wanted to kind of make everybody aware. So this was my awareness chart. And a big shout out to Thames River Magnet and Mystic River Magnet because they've done an extraordinary job, administration, teachers, custodians, you know, just taking a brand-new building and making it a school and the continuous work that it entails. And I can't wait to bring you through on your walkthrough because you will be so impressed.
You know, this chart would also be good if we had the same chart and also had Konaski and Charles Barnum and Northeast. So we could compare, you know, the number of students there with the teaching staff. And I had a question about music teachers. Is, are you including band? Is that why it's more?
Music teachers should be banned, of course, whatever. Yeah.
Probably, yeah.
It should be.
It should be. I'll double check with Lori just to make sure I'm right on that.
I'm sorry, what's the number at Mystic River?
One and a half.
One and a half? That's, that's band and general music.
Yeah.
We'll get clarification on that, so Rita.
Yeah, because you know, we actually went down in that and we still have the same amount of students. So I was just curious.
Yeah, I'll have to double check with that one.
You know, and even art teachers, we have one less art teacher for the same amount of students.
Well, we just have two art teachers, one in each building.
Right, but we had three before.
Right.
Right.
But I don't think the three is necessarily key to the number of students. It's key to the number of buildings. Each building, you have an art teacher regardless of how quote busy they were. So it's two buildings, art teacher. The ultimate question is, can, however many teachers there are, can they accommodate the students that we want?
Right, what's the need? Right, and so I guess that's a really good question to have as we think about our budget, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
We knew we would need additional classroom teachers because we had more classrooms than we did in the three buildings. We have more classrooms in a four, two four-tier schools, which is eight total classrooms across the two schools versus the three classrooms that had two and three. So. If that makes any sense, but we had more classrooms to fill, teachers and kids.
I, Rita, I'm very much in favor of your idea about, I love this chart. Ken, I think you do really nice of it, sort of visualizing all this stuff. But when we come to that portion of our budget, when we're talking about staffing, I think that that's gonna be really important for us to take a look at. And then also really hearing about what is the need. Knowing though, I'm saying this, that people might want it to look like a certain way, but we may not be able to afford it, we may not be able to meet that. So I think that I want to make sure that we give our district what we need, but we also have to be careful about what we'll be able to pass through in terms of increasing budgets. So that's my own comment. Any other questions about this?
Okay. I forget from the budget discussion how many media specialists. I assume one per building, but do they also have LTA support?
Media and LTA. That wasn't on here.
I don't think we've had LTA's in the elementary for a long time.
No LTA's in the elementary.
Well, yours, well, yours is the type of.
As you remember in the last budget, we discussed whether we needed to, because there's so many students in the building. You know, we asked to discuss whether we need to bring it back. That's a large number of students for.
So maybe work that into our budgets.
Our discussion, yes. I'm making my notes. Don't know if I made any of them.
Well, I got you there.
Thank you, I appreciate that. All right, any other questions about this?
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate something that Susan said. And then I said all along when we were planning the building, we can cut all the personnel that we want, but we're still gonna have the same number of students.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that everybody realizes that.
Well, it's not only the number of students either, it's the need of those.
Right.
Right.
Exactly.
And those needs have increased. All right, if there is no, thank you. And once again, I'm looking forward to Susan, your staff to kind of help us lead our conversations around staffing needs you know, in both the elementary and the high school and what would work and what not would work. And being able to kind of give the board some options to kind of take a look at or what we could build towards in our budget time. So if I'm hearing nothing more, we are going to go on to the next. Heard it say, not really. A update on the Treehouse finances. And this has been hanging out for a while for us to talk about, so.
Yes, it was actually on a couple of finance facility committee. I don't know if we ever actually got to it, so.
No.
No, we never did.
But so what we have in, I don't know what attachment this was.
Four.
Four, sorry. This is just a quick top-level analysis of the revenue and the expenses for the Treehouse program over the last fiscal year. And you'll notice that it lost money over that year. Believe that the beginning part was severely impacted by COVID. And so that's why you see that those severe negative amounts in the beginning. But kind of leveling off as we get towards the end of the year. So our cash reserve in the, in the Treehouse program is 63,172. This is one point, almost one and a half months' worth of reserves and that kind of sits within our recommended reserves of between one and three, one and three months. Albeit on the lower side. But I still think it begs the question as to whether or not we're charging enough, if the program is set up properly. I do know that there is a meeting later this week with the group that runs the Treehouse, I think, Phil, to review that. But this is where we ended up at the end of last year.
So is your recommendation, Ken, for the board to kind of making sure that financially we are offering what we're offering and what we're charging meet?
Yeah, exactly.
It is a sliding scale for Treehouses, isn't it?
Yes, they, it's parents, they can sign up to get the cost either reduced or whatever.
And of course during, during the pandemic, that actually had to be at work for the people who are making the least amount a month. People shopping through their shelves. So we're probably even off.
I hope so.
I hope so too.
I think we won't. Does it make sense for this to kind of go back to finance and meet with Phil and Ken around what's the structure moving forward in terms of payments and stuff?
Our agenda's in the very full lately.
Yeah, you have it.
The discussions are, we only allow one hour for the meeting because it's bucks right up against one B K. So we really are not getting better agenda. One thing we did when we set these rates originally in the market study a few years ago, I wonder if it might be time to look back again. We never wanted to, for this to be some sort of huge money maker. We wanted to at least, you know.
Cover our costs.
Yeah, the best service, you know, without gathering. So I think we should know where the markets.
So that would be a good thing for you guys to kind of muddle through and then make recommendations for the upcoming year for them, right? That would be July. Okay. Super, that feels good. Any other, yes, Rita?
I have a question. What schools have the Treehouse program currently?
It says on top of your, the.
Well, just to be clear, that was, that was last year for those schools.
It was last year, so this year.
All five elementary schools have Treehouse. And through a grant, we actually have an after-school program for middle school students.
Really?
To get homework done and to, you know, raise student voice and it's been wonderful, actually.
That's great. So then there should be more revenue next year with five schools having it plus, well, I don't know about the grant, but, and didn't we last year raise the salaries of the staff for Treehouse?
I think that was two, wasn't that a couple of years ago?
Years ago, but we did raise it, I remember. Not last year, last year was such an anomaly. So Ken, what does the 63,000 cash balance mean?
What does it mean? So that's the amount of funds that have been left over in the account after you bring in all the money and you pay out all the expenses as of June 30th. So it's actual cash, so there is still some receipts that would be coming in. But that's, that's the balance they were at at the end of June.
So it's probably quite different now. I wonder if we could get a half-year statement.
Yeah, we could, we could take a look through September, I think. I don't know if we've got October in yet, but.
Yeah, that makes sense, that makes sense to kind of go back to the financing facilities to kind of take a look at that and make recommendations to, I think, the committee of the whole about how we should move on that.
I agree.
Any other questions? Hearing none, let us move on to, what's, this was another referral item that we were able to get to, which is the audit, is that correct?
Yeah, the comprehensive annual financial report.
Like what you said.
Yeah. So the report, we are included with the town, town of Brock. And so it's funny, with us being such a big part of the expenses, we're not really a main player in that report. What we do here is very, from an accounting standpoint, is somewhat basic. You know, we pay out bills, we're not doing a lot of additional things. So that's why, that's why when we talk about our numbers, it doesn't, it doesn't take up a lot of room in the statement, which I'll show you guys, this is, this is last year's. So it's about 150 pages back, forward and front. And you know, we're on just a couple of the pages, really. The main page that really talks to what we do here is the second page of the attachment. It's Exhibit A3, Page 94 of the 2020 report. And if you look at this, you should recognize some of these numbers. The budgeted amount, 77,438,090, that's, that was our budget 20. Also our budget 21 and 22. Drawing everybody. And then the third, fourth and fifth column, this is what we actually spent in that year in 2020. 2021's won't be available until the end of next month, so we're still looking back at 2020. Just to clarify and everybody understands what we're talking about, under the actual columns, there's an expended and encumbered. Expended means cash went out the door. We wrote a check, we did payroll, something where cash went out the door. Encumbered means we put money aside, we're waiting for a bill, waiting for an invoice, we're waiting for something else to happen. So that 661,000 was just the amount of invoices that we had not yet processed. So the total amount on the, on the, our right column of 97,000, 008. So that's the amount that, of the budget that we did not actually request from the town. So theoretically, it goes back into the general fund and the town gets to send it as they see fit. So that's, that's kind of our page, our one page in this, that's all our. But education comes up in a number of different schedules and that's kind of what I tried to put together on this page with the blue lines. I was just trying to, trying to give you guys a flavor of when you see different numbers, what they really mean. So we start with the actual expense, the 77,341, which was from that Page 94. And the first thing that accountants like to do is they like to apply the GAAP basis, that's generally accepted accounting principles. And you'll notice that it goes from 77,341 to 89,014, $14,000. The main difference there is the TRB contribution. TRB stands for Teachers Retirement Board. And this is the cost of pension for the, for the teachers for this year, for this particular year, 2020. And so they add it to expense, but we also add it to revenue because the town doesn't pay anything, this is the state program. If that is a both expense and revenue, there's no impact to the town. But towns like to, like to add things in like this and so we've added it in here. And so now our cost is 89 million. Then we added in the cost, what we spent for grants. This is money going out to, to support those grants. That's 5,385,000. Then there's also the cost, this is just the cost, the expenses for food service. So this is the labor, the food, the supplies, that's another 2.3 million. And so you get another number that shows up in this, on this report, Page 21 of 96 million. And then we add in what they call government-wide expenses. This is really just depreciation, so they calculate a depreciation amount and they add that on. And so the number that goes through in this, in this report was 99,314,979. And then I'll make one more, one more point is on Page 10 of this report, they said the education increased by 6,280,000 dollars a year over year. And it is driven entirely by the increase in the TRB contribution. So it's really nothing we're doing here, it's the cost of the pension program that's driving this difference year over year. So it looks like education is costing more, but in essence, we're really holding things pretty steady.
So in other words, what we, what the TRB is showing, it gets paid back. Whatever goes into it, so that a.
Whatever what goes into it, so that eleven million, nine twenty two, two ninety eight. While, you know, it gets paid out, it gets added back in.
That's right. It's it gets added to both sides of the equation.
Was zero.
But but when you look at the expenses, it it looks like where where our expenses are increasing at a rapid rate, when it's not really, not really true.
So Ken, do they ever make any recommendations, the accountants, about um, asking you for more clarification? Or what else they'd like to see from the board?
No, not no, not really. Occasionally, the if 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 they examine some um, some of our policies and if we're not uh, following a policy like a couple of years ago, there was a federal grant policy that we weren't quite following. They'll make a notation of it within their within their discussion. Uh, but no, they don't. They don't typically make recommendations or anything like that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Ken. The two million, three fifty four, nine thirty six, that's the reimbursement from the federal government to our.
No, so that that's the actual cost, uh, actual cost to uh, to run the program. The reimbursement would be another number. It's it's very close to that, actually.
Okay.
Because that program doesn't doesn't typically um, you know, make or 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 cost money. Uh, but it is a different number than that.
Okay. And and just to clarify, they also test your records. They do everything to that. Like a corporate CPA audit will do. They they test your record to read his. If there were anything. Following, they they would make the note and it would appear in this report.
That's right. Yeah, if they found a discrepancy in controls or in their sample, they they would they would bring it to our attention and and if it was, they would bring it up here if it was a concern.
And and in the current cap or there is.
Correct. Dean, just so you know, that that's not the same. Uh, no, that they don't print the book for me anymore, they.
Oh, this is what this is.
Yes.
All right. Any other questions?
Oh, I should also mention the complete report is available for viewing on the town website.
That's correct.
It's not easy to find, but you have to on the new town website, you have to find the search bar at the top.
Yeah, you could go departments, finance, financial report, and you'll find it there as well.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, um, update on facilities and transportation. Uh-oh. Got that gleam in his eye. I know.
Yeah, so um, uh, thankfully, we have now received our CO for Mystic River School. And and of course, I reported last time that we were very close to getting Fane River at that time, which we did. So we have CEOs for both buildings, Mystic River and Fane River Magnet Schools. So that's number one. Um, buildings and grounds is still delivering uh, delayed uh, move items to the new schools. There were some items that um, they're looking at, um, how can I explain this? Furniture and things that um, they might be able to purchase through the budget of the project. And so as those come up, uh, if they can't meet that in the in the project, then we are delivering some of those uh, older furnishings uh, or equipment to to those schools. So we're still doing that.
Refurbished a little bit, right?
Yeah, well, we yes, yeah, we we we've refinished quite a few of them already. So um, and and somebody was asking me this evening where her stuff is, so. It's on the assembly line. It better be, she said, okay. And it will be. And um, so we are uh, again prepping Mary Morrison School, moving things in that building. So that robotics will be moving in there in the very near future. I'm waiting for now um, a timetable from the robotics. Um, manager uh, to let us know exactly what their plan is, how they expect to get stuff into that building and how long it would take. Town manager Bert asked me last week, I believe, okay, what soon as I get that, I'll be sharing that with the with the town manager. Uh, we are working with Myers, uh, which is the company that's doing, has been doing the moves to the schools. And we'll be uh, working on cleaning out the uh, schools that closed, SB Butler and Claude Chester. So so I'm working with Myers and Tom Bebe, who is working for Arcadis, on on doing all that stuff. So SB Butler and Claude Chester uh, continue to be emptied out. So we're readying furniture for the auction. But before the auction, actually, the town requires that uh, any of this equipment and materials be auctioned off uh, rather than just be tossed. And so we're getting that stuff ready for auction. But prior to auction, um, we will allow uh, the principals of the schools to go through one more time in case there's something that they see that is to their liking. And then we will offer it to other town agencies and departments within the town. We'll let them come through on a day or two and in case there are things that they may want to, there will probably be file cabinets and other type of furniture that other departments might want. I know the library took quite a bit the last time, so. Well, we'll give give the opportunity to all those other departments before we actually have the auction. And then Tom will get that stuff to the auction. And so that's it on facilities for now. And if there are any questions, I'd answer that before I move on to transportation.
Well, Jason, if I already took chairs, are they gone? You can answer that after.
I'll have to answer that later because I have to.
All right. So any other question for that part? All right, transportation.
Okay, so um, STA is now up to full staff. They they got drivers that we thought we were going to get that passed their test and so on. So they had uh, the right amount of drivers uh, for staffing the buses. However, we don't have any additional drivers at this point. Usually, they would have four or five additional drivers for call-ins when those happen on a basis sometimes. And as a matter of fact, this morning, there were six callouts this morning. Uh, some, I think, were attributed to the accident on ninety five. People got stuck over on the other side of the bridge for quite a while. Um, but uh, others, because it's a Monday morning, I think, but.
Big, big ass.
Uh, so uh, we're working on that. And they also have uh, four drivers uh, in training right now. Uh, it takes the quite a bit of time to get that and up to fourteen weeks to get it done. I don't know what stage you're in. They've been doing it for a few weeks anyways. Uh, so hopefully by the end of the year, those those drivers will be ready to join the force. Uh, I did um, get the opportunity today to go down to the bottom of Fort Hill and speak to the traffic control person who's working for Grosso Tech. Uh, but that person really isn't interested in in staying there any longer uh, when it comes to that traffic light down at the bottom of the hill. So we're going to have to uh, work with the police chief uh, and figure out exactly how we can get somebody down there to uh, run it after that person leaves.
We're actually setting up a meeting that would include the police department. Um, some staff here, STA and STA and the um, you know, to really work through some of the the agonies, like the lights, for instance. And so the chief of sorrow has been very responsive. And they do have a policeman that gets out right across from Fitch and then also someone manning the lights at the top of Fort Hill. And if we can get someone also across so for the parent, it's not the buses that are down there. That's for the parent um, congestion. Um, that would be helpful. So we figured hopefully this week, we're going to be Joyce is working on it to get a meeting of everybody, and it would be great to have a board member. I think I sent that out in my.
Yep.
Notice is just keeping you informed on all the meetings that we've been having, having um, and responding to some of the concerns that the parents are having, so.
Yeah, anybody who's come out of that light at the bottom of Grosso Tech, uh, the middle school knows that that's a very long light. And so it's kind of critical to get somebody there to man that switch uh, so that we can get parents out. And also, don't forget, the buses are coming down the hill too. So we want to keep the buses rolling once they get they can get through the high school because we have a police officer there. And most times, there's somebody at the top of the hill to man that light. But then we get caught on the hill. So uh, while the middle school is really up their game and gotten the buses out earlier. It's still taking seven to eight minutes to get to pass that third light right now. So if we can uh, cut that down by three or four minutes would be really helpful in getting the kids home in a timely manner.
Well, how long does the guy from or woman from Grosso, how long are they gonna, are they willing to stay until?
I don't know what time he stays till now, but he's not there when our buses come down the hill.
So he's just doing grass up?
He's he's there for Grosso and Grosso only.
I mean, that's something, though, the police chief is willing to look at. He's actually sent staff down there. So there may be a way that we can get someone there, even if I have to pay for it for that time.
Maybe, but just for an hour, maybe.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just to alleviate that congestion.
But it's not just the traffic uh, that um, coming down the hill from the schools uh, in in both both directions. But also the traffic that's going up Fort Hill at that time. This is quite a bit of traffic, even going up the hill at that time. So it needs to be somebody who is really qualified to run that light.
Right.
I don't like the color of your car.
Inappropriate, sorry. Go ahead, Sam.
Yeah, that's what I have.
Question for Sam.
Yes.
Um, Sam, I had two questions, actually. One is, is it possible for the buses to loop around and exit out of the Fitch driveway so that they don't have to wait for that light? Or have only the buses that maybe are going to be going towards Mystic and then the ones that are going towards rotten, you know, go down to the light, you know?
They all exit out. They all arrive in the Fitch parking lot and exit out of the Fitch parking lot now.
I I thought I thought you said the issue was the light down near Sutton Park.
That's right, but that's for the parents. So the parents are going in and out of that.
Only the parents.
Yeah, for the pickup and drop off. Yeah.
So they're not allowed to go out the Fitch driveway?
No, they're not supposed to go out the drive, the other driveway.
No, we've really separated the parent pickup from the bus pickup for safety reasons.
But the buses do get stuck on the hill by that light at the bottom of the hill at Sutton Park.
Right, right. And and my question is, I know I saw the beautiful sign for Groton Middle School that is up there. Is it going to be illuminated in any way? Because it's dark.
It is. The business office uh, requested or asked for an account uh, last week, I believe, agenda bell asked for that last week. So as soon as the account is uh, confirmed by rotten utilities, that uh, that will be illuminated.
Thank you.
Just had a couple more items.
Yeah. Do you have?
It's an observation, which is, was any of this, or maybe it's a question, was any of this for the when we were first talking about siding at the middle school? I mean, did anybody see that the Ring Drive, Fort Hill intersection was going to be a choke point of some sort?
And Chris said the plans, and the first plans were coming out.
I mean, nothing can be done now, but you know, I'm sort of wondering whether that was.
Being part of the twenty twenty, Dean, I remember we you have like a traffic and you have like a traffic analysis. So I think that that traffic analysis was done.
Right, so.
So I mean, I think that we.
Lessons learned. I mean, is that accurate or? Yeah, well, next time we do something.
Well, but also we have the issue of there's a lot of traffic on from coming out of Groton Middle School from parent pickup. It's also a pandemic. So I'm I'm wondering what would happen it once the buses become more fluent that and we're not having so many parents coming in and out, whether that changes. I mean, that's all gears say. But I appreciate the fact that we do need to look in the rearview mirror to see should have, would have, could have, but we got it. Like, this is this is ours.
Yeah, and 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 one of the main concerns was dismissal time, or what they looked at was dismissal time too. So um, with Grosso Tech being a different time from the middle school, the dismissal, but it doesn't mean that the lag and when teachers can leave, Grosso Tech now interferes or or coincides with the parent leaving the middle school. So I I think that that's the problem. A couple of the quick things. So we did have a meeting with STA this morning and uh, through that meeting uh, Tony Murgo reiterated and Joe Perisi reiterated that they uh, will be uh, uh, reminding drivers that they are to do the full routes. How they are printed. Um, they'll be checking the buses after each run, uh, which the the uh, safety person has always required them to do. But they'll be reminding of those uh, items uh, along uh, with a retraining session coming up uh, with their safety person, Marie Illingworth. So those three things are are going to be reiterated over the course of the next few weeks with all drivers.
This, Sam, um, our bus is still sitting for a long time at the middle school in the morning before they can disembark.
Uh, longer than we would hope, yes. But I I think we're going to be talking about a potential solution to that.
Okay. We discussed some of that this morning, and then I'm going to follow up with the principles of those two buildings. Let's see what we can do differently. It's November, and we're still talking about buses?
I know.
Now, I just my my heart goes in in all seriousness, my heart goes out to what this means for the children, what it means for the families and for our staff. Um, but I would have hoped that this would have.
Been done by now.
Been cleared up. Dean.
Or I know this is touchy, but we're gonna find out what happened with the four year old. Did something happen? Didn't quote lose a kid?
No.
Get off, don't get off when they were supposed to. Okay.
There was there was some confusion. We did bring the parents in to speak to STA.
Okay.
So we were able to really listen to their full side of the story and the STA staff, I thought, were very compassionate and um, very responsive. Um, the CEO basically said if a driver ever left a child unattended, that that would be the end. You know, that they would be fired. So that never happened.
Okay.
There there certainly were mistakes made, and certainly they're dealing with that. Um, so.
Yeah, I mean, you you'll appreciate that, even though I don't want I don't want to stir anything up. But when you're Board of Education, people will say, hey, you're on the board. What's going on with?
Right.
And a lot of times you don't have them.
Well, you can assure everybody that uh, that we viewed the tape as soon as we could get it and and get it downloaded. Uh, so that my staff, the the coordinators and I all looked at that tape and reported to Susan immediately.
Yeah. This, and we had the parents look at the end of the tape too.
We had talked at one point about in the future about having that where the parents can that GPS app. Have we looked at the cost of that or are we talked about that? Is that something we should be looking at for next budget season?
I think Tom and Dr. Kennedy are talking about that and taking a look at.
I think they're going to actually test it out.
Okay.
Um, in a couple of the schools to see how it works, and then that would be something that we could budget for next year. But they want to really test it to see if it would work.
We test it with administrators of a couple of schools first, before it's. District-wide.
So that they could.
Yeah, I know. I'm just like, okay, I just um, New Haven had just gone to this, from what I understand in the news, that New Haven is is using this GPS for students so parents can see where their children are. And I just was in light of this situation. Um, I have something that we we should really definitely be looking at.
Well, I mean, I think that when we were talked about. Start this sentence one more time.
Please do.
It's it's Monday. Um, I I think that last summer when we were um, having conversations about the new routes, the two tiers. I I had the impression that the GPS was something that wasn't a done deal. I I don't think that that was sold to us, but that it was much more um, uh, palatable that was going to be coming down the road road. So I guess um, that's something that we should probably be having a larger thought about.
Although GPS for bus navigation. Uh, Liz was talking about being able to basically track.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, it would be an app on your phone, right?
Yeah, we're my kids on bus thirty six, we're on bus thirty six.
Right, and that's what I'm, that's the same thing. Thank you.
Um, I do appreciate um, uh, Susan, that once the the issue came to you, that it was um, that a couple of actually the board members um, was able to forward that.
to you that it was, um, that a couple of actual board members, um, was able to forward that you were very responsive to that and responsive to the board. And I do appreciate the fact that you kept the board really up to loop since lots of people reach out to us. So never, I actually would rather be over informed about some of these things because I think people um, do a lot of either posting or asking us about what's going on. And so that feels like that would be the other thing.
Can I make one quick comment?
Yeah.
You know, I saw this originally, it came out on a Facebook page of the Groton Community Forum. And my thought was again, maybe Groton Public Schools needs to have
I agree.
And I think that's something that maybe Dr. Kennedy needs to maybe we should direct Dr. Kennedy to be looking to, to post to creative, because.
So interesting that you're saying that if you go, cause I think you're planning to go to the cave convention.
Right.
Okay. So one of the workshops at cave convention is to post or not to post. Looking at the legalities of a district having a Facebook. So that actually might be an interesting one for some of us. If whoever's going to go to that.
There are posted agenda for that.
Yeah, you have to, I'll, I'll talk to you afterwards.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Uh, I don't have anything else at this time.
Sam, the work that you are doing, the, what you are doing with all the facilities and transportation is, is, um, just amazing. And thank you very much for your service.
Talk about being responsive with a capital R.
Jay, do you have any questions? I just, you're at my back, so.
No, no, I just, I, I agree, Sam.
Moving and
Communication, I, I don't know whether Dr. Kennedy has a chance to put our board event email address. The people don't have to copy and paste each of us individually. It'd be nice if it was just one click. They could write to all of us.
Yeah.
So we have the official communication comes directly to us. We, we can't all be looking at Facebook every moment of every day, but the parents have a concern. If they clicked on that uh, distributionless email, then, then
That makes so much sense. Well, we've requested that, I think a couple of months ago. So we just need to have that followed up on. Well, that's a good time to change it.
Absolutely.
All right, um, uh, CIPs. Because. Kim, do you need this?
No, I have it right here on my iPad. I actually charged my iPad so that I would see it because I can't see it on my phone. And so, uh, we have, um, I, I believe five items that are, uh, listed to go to the town for, uh, request to go into the CIP list. Uh, first one is the Fitch High School Athletics. Uh, and that is the, uh, re-crowning of the football field. And to add, um, irrigation, uh, to that, uh, field at the same time for, um, watering to make it more efficient and costly to water that field. And so that request is for, um, physically your twenty-three of two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars aside and re-crown the field. And, uh, twenty-eight thousand, seven fifty, uh, for the irrigation of that field. Now, uh, the fields committee is still working on this, so I, I don't know where this one will go when it gets to the town or to the planning department. Uh, these things have been cut by, um, I believe two, two, two different areas could probably cut it before it got to the town council or the town manager could cut it. Or, or even the planning commission, I think, could actually not, at least not forwarded on to the town council, but we'll see how that one goes. So that's the first one. Uh, the second one is, uh, the Charles Barnum Elementary School roof replacement. And, uh, that is for, uh, a million dollars to, to replace the roof at, uh, Charles Barnum. Uh, that one we put in last year for, um, replacement. It's well over its, uh, expected life expectancy of twenty years. Uh, but we've been able to, um, patch it as we go along. And, uh, the state will reimburse it at, at about fifty percent. So we're going to ask again uh, for the replacement of that roof. The third item is the Northeast Academy, uh, air quality stuff. And, uh, that is to actually, um, we're pushing that off, uh, another year. With regard to, uh, changing up the HVAC equipment on the roof. So it's about two hundred thousand dollars a year to start the replacement of those units. But because, um, we have instituted the, um, process, uh, the active dehumidification at the school, it has mitigated the humidity problem in that building. Uh, and, uh, we will be working on the drainage, uh, hopefully this summer after the engineering uh, is, is drawn up. Uh, and hopefully that will, uh, again, reduce any concerns with humidity and maybe we won't have to change those units on the roof, but continue on the way that we are. Uh, and, uh, five D is coming up now. Is, uh, HVAC upgrades at both, uh, the Fitch High School, uh, what we call the vintage part of the school, which is the older part of the school. When, uh, when these building projects took place, uh, back in two thousand and eight. The new section of the building, of course, was built and the office space and some of those areas, nurses space, those were all upgraded. They did not touch the, uh, the business wing or those areas down in the back of, of the building. So um, this would be, um, an engineering study, uh, to, uh, make, uh, make some improvements in that area. As well as the HVAC system at, uh, Charles Barnum School. So we're asking for fifty thousand dollars to do an engineering study and plans for those two areas of those two buildings. And then the last item, uh, is of course the Fitch High School Culinary Arts, uh, that we just spoke about earlier in the meeting. And, uh, you can see, uh, for physically years, uh, twenty twenty-three, we're asking for the seventy thousand dollars for the uh, study and plans. And, uh, the six hundred thousand dollars would be for construction the following year, which would include equipment as well.
Did, yes.
I just wanted, um, to iterate. So I talked to, to, uh, Sam about why, you know, we're continuing to put the field back on the CIP Fitch field. And even though the current council, you know, wants to put this through an athletic field task force, that is sort of stalled. While they decide what to do with Rochester. And since we've been asking for this same renovation since I joined the board. Uh, we just want to be consistent that this is not a need that somehow magically and that it's still there and, uh, just report that, you know, it's not getting any better on its own. So it will need to be addressed either through the task force or through the second chair.
Thank you. Dean?
Uh, the source of funding, uh, for the Barnum H U C upgrades, you, you have it as A, but what is B?
Uh, well, that, uh, actually the source of funding is determined by the plant or, uh, the town council, not by us.
Oh, okay. I just don't know what, I've never seen any before. I mean, I presume it's capital reserve. It could be other too.
On, on mine, capital reserve is C, but.
Right. Most everything is C.
Yeah.
Nothing's going on the bonding. I'm just wondering what the game was. But.
I know there's no code here.
These are forms that are given to us by the planning department.
It says funding C is for capital reserve fund. G is general obligation. But it doesn't say what A is.
Also on the summary page, the fish culinary is listed, so funding for A should be C, this is a detail, but that, these are just small.
Well, this hasn't gone to the planning commission yet, so that, that will be, uh, determined, uh, later when it gets to another level.
Maybe there's somebody in the last, beginning with A.
It could be. Thank you.
Thank you for the service that you've offered. Any other questions about the capital improvement projects? Awesome. All right. As we've done a lot of work in a fair amount of time, thank you. Uh, we are now at, uh, the referral list and also the suggested future topics. Um, can someone tap the, uh, Comethian board? That would be so.
I didn't get any of that.
I'm just like, very frustrated with them. I sent them an email. But thank you. I appreciate that.
And so, so Dean, I know that, uh, I had been, um, I've really been hearing your comment about the referral tracking and, uh, also future agenda items. I just, I, I figured we would start thinking about that, um, as the new, as the new board comes on. And I actually think that this is a, a great item, just to kind of think about, um, in a retreat forum where we can kind of have more looser conversations about how we want to do stuff. So that's what I was thinking about. That's why it's still on. It's not that I haven't heard your. Okay.
Are we going to have a retreat?
Yes, the, the, that's my, that's, that's my goal. So, once the Yeah, one, yeah, January, February. Remember, January, February is a very busy So we have to sort of think about that. Um, so I am, I will entertain any conversation about that. I, I, just so people know, what I have heard is that a referral, um, to the finance committee around the tree house and looking at that. Does that make sense? Would I, I have a question for the board. Would it make sense for the financing facilities to get a first crack at um, returning the buildings back to the town or should that be a committee of the whole action?
You know, there's a big procedure.
Yes, there is.
We meet with John Burt this month, I think, not next month, I need to follow one.
Yeah, but I think that the board has to meet with it and we have to figure out what needs to be done. So I don't know if it makes sense that the finance and facility says, you know, within the next six months or whether we you know, allow you guys to kind of think about that and have it come back to the board. I just, uh, I was just thinking out loud.
I think we can handle it at the cow level because it's not a question, I mean, the, the real work has to be done by the town. Our only job is to run through a procedure, which we can't think of off the top of our heads now. To turn it over to the town. Then the town has to do the magic work of figuring out what to do with these.
Okay, so. So your, your recommendation is for us to kind of throw it on the
Staff and likeness is what the procedure is.
Okay.
We can do the research on our own, but then have a cow meeting and both
Okay.
Have explained and do our business.
I've had that on the referral list in September thirteenth. It's already under the cow.
Yep. Oh, my goodness. Look at you go.
So, I mean, I think it should be as soon as possible.
Yep.
But those buildings used, I have a question real quick for, for Sam. Are those buildings being used at all? Barnum, for example, other than
That's, that's the only thing Barn, Barn, Butler has been used for.
Yeah, that's right. Butler was
Butler is used for voting and so was Mary Morrison. Mary Morrison will be used for, um, robotics. Rochester hasn't been used for anything other than, uh, we're using that as a, a place to refurnish, uh, refinish some of the furnishings that we're moving to them in schools.
Yeah, I ask because I remember when knowing school was, was given up. If they sit too long, they become more and more unusable. Without a lot of expense. Some people, these buildings have to be lived in. To kind of keep them.
You are right.
And, and Dean, um, the town should then be responsible for the, they heat the buildings and take care of them. They're supposed to. Um, I had a quick question too. This is Sam, um, do we mow the lawn or does the town mow the lawn at our schools?
Our landscaper, uh, does the lawns for us at all our schools.
We have a landscaper. Okay, thank you.
Uh, the other referral item that I heard, um, was what are we doing for in our district to support our students? Um, uh, to help them sort of, uh, bring them, uh, up to speed. That's not the word, but, um, I'm going to make sure that we
Close the achievement gap left.
Yeah.
Yes, close the achievement. I think that's on here also.
I think you're right too, but I'm, I'm just saying that I think we can kind of talk about that.
We were talking about line items, so I don't know if that goes under finance and facilities.
Well, um, I think actually that feels like a really good committee of the whole is to kind of take a look at what is, what, what are we being done instead of just having it in the curriculum? But having that through all and then also kind of talking, tying that to then how does that, how does that fit our budget?
Kim, can, can I, I, I didn't finish the answer to, uh, to read.
Finish?
Well, I, I, I finished, but I, I didn't, I didn't tell her the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So, uh, actually, uh, and, and I, I shouldn't, uh, ignore the fact that Parks and Rec actually helps us with a couple of our fields too. They do the high school, uh, baseball field, football field, and they do the new, uh, grass fields at the, at the middle school for us presently too.
That's great. Thank you.
Nice partner, partnering. Any other?
You know, I, I, I believe we could take off twenty twenty-one dash seventeen because I believe Ken discussed that tonight, the audit report.
Oh, my goodness. Thank you.
But it's, I, I mean, that was you, Kim, I believe. Is that, is that what you were talking about, KW?
Yep. Yeah. Anything else, folks, for either the review of the referral list or suggested future, um, topics? Yeah, I was thinking that too. Can you say that one more time?
One card, one, one community is, um,
Twenty twenty-one dash eight.
Yes.
Under Cal. Seven twelve twenty-one.
You can probably get an update from Clint Kennedy.
Yeah.
I know he had a meeting, maybe a week ago.
So maybe that could be thrown in the board notes if there's an update.
Yeah.
That would be great. Cause I know it's getting, cause that's, I would love to see that, that get wrapped up for you. The one card, one community.
Well, if, if not, I, I would like to be part of it on the line.
Absolutely.
I'd like to be part of it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Your agenda topic, could I just suggest, um, asking Susan like to tell us in our board notes what they're planning on doing about vaccinations in our elementary schools?
Yep. Perfect. All right, I've got a motion on the floor for adjournments. It has been seconded, sorry, we did second it before by Jay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Obey. This motion has carried. Good night, folks.